They'll not be subject to a property line setback. And then you should add non-participating. Obviously, we talked about, you had adjoining participants, you know, they do. And then the fence though, agree on the property line. Just to clarify that, that's not for, not participants.
And not have a property setback line for adjacent participating properties.
Correct. I think we would have to define it in a negative, but I could capture the intent because we define non-participating lot. So it would be not be subject to property line setbacks for those properties that are not non-participating lots. Because we define non-participating lot, we didn't define participants because you can find one and not have to define the whole. So that's how I would give it, if that's the intent. And I think that is the, what the chair talked about is the intent. It seems like where there are these types of projects, many participants prefer them to be on property lines to farm around.
Any objections to put that in?
Yeah, it has to be.
Alright, any other changes or questions? Other than.
I would like to clarify, I missed the last meeting and you said you had a motion at the last meeting dealing with setbacks. And is that correct? Did this new printing for what the motion was, or is it still just being discussed?
Based on my recollection, it there was a motion to change boundaries of non-participating property lines. So on page twelve on the top left, two, two times from the lot line instead of one and a half. And it's my understanding of the planning commission, that that motion failed, so it was one of the same.
And then there was also, John, there was also a motion then to have it two times the height from the house. And that, as I remember that, couldn't happen.
Yeah, that was already, already in there.
Left it, two, two times the height of the house, one and a half the height property line.
Of a non-participant. Any other questions?
Are we leaving the height from the, on, we're not doing anything, we're living in.
No, it's right now, yeah. I guess with that, I would entertain a motion to, to have Ken prepare a clean copy that we could present at a public hearing.
Well, were we gonna deal in the thing with the decommissioning here?
Yeah, that's, that's in there, yeah.
So, that's a good question. So, John asked the question why there's not a dollar amount in the decommissioning? And what the decommissioning provision says is the dollar amount would be determined by the township. And typically, how you would do that is you would use your escrow account to hire an engineer to determine based on the number of turbines or improvements, how much money it would cost to decommission those. Typically, you don't want to put a dollar amount in that section because the dollar amount could become stale. If you have a, you know, with inflation and you have to bend the ordinance. Or it's not going to be flexible for a particular project. So obviously, if a project with one turbine, it's going, it should have a lower dollar amount than one with multiple. So it's a, it's a discretion, it's a standard that the township can impose using this discretion.
John?
Yes?
I guess quite before the motion was made or acted on, do you have any questions of any of us as far as what we talked about, that's the clarification to get back at the. I, I guess my question, are we ready for the hearing? Do you mind putting it back together for, ready to go to the public hearing?
I am, I would be prepared to prepare, I could prepare a clean copy based on the discussion. Based on incorporating the recommendations in the memo, the overlay description with the bounds, and the discussion that the planning commission has had. And I, you know, I could, I would also be prepared to share the clean copy well in advance in the public hearing. So you could come with further questions for the public hearing. But yeah, the short answer is yes, I could.
Okay. Then we would all get copies of that?
Yes. Yes, and the, and I think the public should receive copies of it as well.
So I can get posted on the website?
Yeah.
Uh, I would like to bring up, Chris, still dealing with setbacks on page eleven. On the item one of the heaven's elbow of structure. At the end of the two times tip height or one thousand feet. Now, up to Isabella, I know that the closest any turbine up there is is twelve fifty. And I think that's at least, and probably I'm sure Ken would want a much larger number here. But I think we do need to adjust this.
Of course it is, two times whichever.
I know.
Pretty likely it would be greater than a thousand. But yeah, it could have changed.
Well, I know through a lot of the public comment, about here in sixteen forty, over and over and over and over. And I know we don't need to.
What do you propose in twelve fifty?
Well, that's at least, it's.
A greater of two times or twelve hundred and fifty feet.
Or sixteen forty with the safety.
Well, you're twelve hundred and fifty, you basically, you take a square forty acres. I think you would be, what, twelve hundred?
Thirteen twenty, thirteen twenty is forty eight twenty.
Thirteen, thirteen twenty would be a square forty. I personally would, I'll make the motion to adjust the four thousand to change it to thirteen forty.
You can, you can add, I think there's a motion on the floor, so I think.
I certainly don't want them any closer than they are up in Isabella County.
But by design, they can't be close together. They can't steal the wind from each other when you go taller. Right, and that's fine too. I mean, if you got a six hundred foot turbine, you're at twelve hundred is the same thing. Cause it times two setbacks, so I'm not going more than that. Put it in the center of a square you could field, I mean, that's fine too.
We're talking about the habitable structures?
You're talking about habitable structures.
So, yes, I'll read, I'll make, I'll make the motion to make it thirteen hundred and forty on habitable structures.
Participate or not, doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter.
Non-participating. There's no.
You say twelve fifty or thirteen forty? Thirteen.
Thirteen twenty or thirteen forty?
Well, I did say thirty, I was, I wanted to make it at least a length of a forty, so let's try. Thirteen forty.
That'd be getting to forty four.
Motion was made and supported to change the, the distance of a greater of two times the tip height or thirteen hundred and twenty feet. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Any other questions?
I do have a question, which just you guys filled it probably before I was on the planning commission. But on page fifteen, top left corner, under decommissioning, that we're down on the section four, requirements for the single W E C S.
Yeah.
Which you must have discussed before I was around, but I see down here we have, we have this tower as not exceeding eighty feet.
So that's like, if you're on a farm, you have your own turbine, that's not a utility turbine.
It's a single, it's a single.
Yes. Yes.
Okay. But I see on there, we still have that, that the distance of that tower must be at least two times from any property line. And that tower is a fraction of the size of these turbines. Is there a reason we have this one at two times and then?
Um, I don't know, there's a reason for, that the planning commission would have, I know this is, like many other committees do, they have a two times limit.
I know this tower is way shorter, so.
Hundred.
So I think that's generally the reason you, you kind of just have a smaller distance because it presumably doesn't make as much noise.
He just said it's larger, it's a larger difference.
Eighty feet tall plus, with the tip height, it can be a little bit very.
The, early on, there was a lot of discussion about the three and a half acres. At one time, that was ten acres, and it was inside for a small tower, and we wanted it reduced. But, so we ended up reducing it.
Any other questions?
No, I guess when it comes into like the shadow flicker and stuff like that, what would be something that would trigger that to be tested as that annual thing? Do we need to have language in there for when that can occur or should occur?
Yeah. So what's the question is when it can occur? So essentially, it's a hard cap, it's a hard cap of three hours.
That's the duration of the test, right?
The duration, so how they determine whether they're compliant with that standard is they would submit a study as part of their application materials that more or less estimates based on models of the shadow flicker. But then if you look at, going on the top left here, uh, ten, they would have to provide a post-construction study. So if they were, you know, making a lot of assumptions, if there were a project that was constructed, they would have to prepare another study that the township reviews to ensure that that standard is met.
Do we need to have language in here that, like different times a year to do that study, or, or?
No, I, I haven't, no, I haven't experienced that in other communities, that needs to be at different times a year. So, how I've been in the, when we've represented townships when they, and counties when they've had these types of projects, typically the modeling they use is based on, it's kind of averaging of the clients. So there's, there's data about the, the weather patterns, and what's cloudy, and what's not cloudy. And they generally use, they calculate shadow flicker as each home, which would be considered a receptor site, would be treated as almost as, it's like a greenhouse more or less. So it's assuming that the shadow flicker is accumulating based on, you know, it all being windows when, you know, obviously the structure isn't. So typically, the modeling is pretty conservative. And then you would, and you hire a planner to review their study to make sure that it's correct. And then they would have a post-construction study that you'd also review to make sure that it's correct, so there's, there's layers of protection.
So, so it's basically after the project's, when it's commissioning, that's when the testing's done?
They do a model to estimate it before the project or then after it's constructed.
Then after it's constructed. And then what if there was a, a request for one after that, is there anything in there for that?
You could add a condition on the project. Otherwise, no, not in the ordinance. But with the caveat that they need to meet all the standards in the ordinance, and there's that continuing escrow fund. So let's say someone's noticing a lot of flicker from one turbine, the township could investigate that at the end.
Right, and, and we could hire our own testing?
Yes.
Okay.
First, you, first you would probably go through the complaint resolution process to develop. And then if that's not, you know, satisfactory process, then you would use township's own process and ask for it.
Any other questions?
I said we make a motion, they get a clean copy.
See, we had a motion was made to have our attorney prepare us a clean copy for the, instead of public hearing. Is there support? Then move in seconded to have our attorney clean up the copy here and present us a clean copy for the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. So basically, our next meeting, we would have, we'll have to schedule a hearing. Obviously, there's, I think it's fifteen days, everything's got to be posted. Obviously, we should get it on the township website. So I would think we'd probably try to target a date, near the end of March, first of April.
When is our regularly March meeting? That will be the fourth Monday?
Yeah, and I think we got a couple of issues with that date.
Yeah.
So I think we'll have to round up to make sure the building and everybody's available and set the date. Maybe we could have it set at the next township board meeting, which I think would be next Thursday. Maybe we could have a date set by then, and I think we'll target the end of March, first of April, first of April. Any other questions on that?
Alright. Definitely wanted it, uh, so there's twenty eight is coming up this, and twenty nine, thirty, twenty nine would be a Tuesday night.
I think Wednesday night, first turn tomorrow's ash Wednesday, and Wednesday nights, so we got potential Tuesday dinner. We could kind of set that as target, get it settled.
Does that give everybody enough time to get it done, or does it have looking in the first two pages?
Put the guy on.
I'd be able to get it done.
I will have to depend on everybody, see everybody's schedule.
Hey, you're gonna want to watch the first week in April, just like you said, spring, spring great year, you know?
Well, planning out of school district.
Some of the last week of March.
And we'll shoot for you. Well, at this time, we've opened up the head of comments.
It should be fun.
Start out with a Winfield Township residents first, for two minutes. Please state your name and where your phone.
I'll start it off today. Hi, guys. Uh, Dave Myers, Winfield Township. And, you know, while I did enjoy the discussion that you guys were having up here tonight, um, that's the first time I've actually heard that at this planning committee, so thank you for that, I really do. Uh, it's important that you, you are tuning in and listening. So as Ken said, you heard this last, uh, the last time you guys met, we are getting organized and we're, we're paying close attention to what you guys are saying. And I hope you're listening close to what we're saying, it seems like you could be. You're falling short on a few things. Height of the towers, that's a big deal. You guys don't think it's a big deal? We think it's a big deal, so you should be thinking three hundred feet. That's what we said we would go for, three hundred feet. Four times the setback, no shadow flicker on, uh, a non-participating property. Those are, those are things right there that gotta be there. If you don't, we're gonna just referendum. You can, you can, you can bring it, you can bring it to, uh, you know, to Kyle and have him print it, get it on the website, you can do all of that. Plus, you're gonna be right back doing something again. I'm just telling you right now, just be aware. You gotta, you gotta listen, so I wouldn't be in a big hurry to get it going without thinking, you already listened to us once. We'll be happy to share more.
One person did.
But you gotta, you gotta be listening, or it's just not gonna happen. Thank you.
Steve Cole, Winfield Township. I haven't heard you mention anything about setbacks from streams. We should have a setback from the state V Q.
No, 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 no.
That's just my personal opinion and.
Thank you. Good job.
Hello, I'm Kevin Murphy, Winfield Township. This maybe could be a delicate question to ask every one of you, but I'm sure every one of you have lost a loved one. Close your eyes for just a minute and think about that individual that you lost, you'd love to share, maybe Christmas, a birthday, something. We have a prayer that we used to say with our children every night, and please think about how this goes. Thank you, Lord, for each new day you give to me, for earth and sky and sand and sea. For rainbows after springtime showers, autumn leaves and summer flowers. Winter snowscales so serene, harvest fields of gold and green. Beauty shining all around, lilac scent and robin sound. Stars that twinkle high above, and all the people that I love. The birds, you won't hear them, the serene fields, you won't see them. You'll see those damn wind turbines every time you do it for what, an almighty buck? We, when, like our loved ones are gone, our property's gonna be gone. Alls we'll see is these god ugly things, and they're not gonna just leave. They'll be there forever, so please think about that when you think about what we're gonna do to our community. Thank you for listening.
Good evening, Mary Kay Darnell, over here in Yankee Row. I have a concern about where you're going to publish this public page document. I'm concerned that I'm going to have to go to the township hall and take pictures of these pages posted on the web. Uh, the, the River Valley Shopper or the Buyer's Guide, whatever that paper is. The only place I've been able to find it is at Canadian Lakes, at Hitzem, and it's for, um, Canadian Lakes. So, I'm gonna publish this in the Lakeview newspaper, we're gonna put it in the Daily News. Where are we gonna be able to find it? On the website, okay, so, the website. Guys, you still got Julia on the planning commission. Website is not necessarily up to date.
Don't let Joe up there. Dale, apparently you think that only lake residents are here talking to you, and you are a hundred percent wrong. This township as a whole is concerned about this wind ordinance. This wind ordinance is not just for you as a leaseholder. It is for the township as a whole, to protect the township as a whole. And especially to protect it financially. And you are sitting there, you don't even want to include stuff that Omira is suggesting that you include cause you just want it to be vague for you to have turbine on your property. That's conflict of interest textbook, and for Omira not to recognize that and tell you that is frack. Ken, you were right on, and you guys better listen to what he said because he was right on. Chris, apparently you weren't listening when we asked for you to show us what you were talking about. So I would suggest at the public hearing, you use all the technology that this place is offering us, and you show us the maps, the ordinance. I suggest that you not target the last week of March and the first week of April, when most Michiganders have plans. And Mr. Omira, did you say tonight that turbines will have governmental immunity? And can you please explain that to us?
Do you want me to answer that question?
Please, they don't even know what it's like.
I said the township would be subject in many claims to a doctrine called governmental immunity. I didn't say the turbines would.
Derek Dickerson, Winfield Township and Indian Lakes resident. First, I wanna say thank you, sir, for standing up to pretty much the rest of the board. Um, I do know that probably seventy-five percent of Indian Lakes, taking away the north side that's looking south, will see every wind turbine on Mr. Elwark's property. What's just gonna, what's gonna happen to all the property values, attached space in Indian Lakes is huge. No one wants a water view with a wind turbine in the background, no one.
They don't care.
Hi, I'm Kathy Cox, I'm from Winfield Lake. I have this overlay map, I'm pretty sure it's not what you were looking at, but it's what I have. I just wanna read the names of the proposed people one more time. That I see on here, I see Cars, he's a county commissioner. I see Garrett Black, his brother is on the board. I see Dale Ulrich, he's sitting right in front of me. I see Ken Rader, his son is right there. I see Ben Gordon, he's right there. I see David Rader, his family member is on the board. I see Edith Cole, his family is on the board. I see Chris Rader, he sits on the board. I see Phyllis Larson, she sits on the board. I see two landowners that don't sit on the board. Now, you tell me who this is representing? Who do you represent? Do you represent yourselves, your family? Or do you represent the people in your township?
You already know the answer.
And just to clarify, John Black doesn't have a brother, Garrett. So, I guess if you're gonna pull up that, make sure stuff is, um, correct. Garrett may have leased, but he doesn't have a brother, which I'm presuming you think is John. So, just make sure when you're getting out here and talk, that your facts are correct.
Anybody else from Winfield? Can you open it up, any, any other residents?
Jessica Whitehall, Kate of Fountains, I'd like to, um, make sure that everybody in the audience knows about the steering committee that was compiled back in two thousand nineteen. November fourth, two thousand nineteen, to whom it may concern, Apex Clean Energy has expressed its interest to develop a new wind farm in our area of Mount Palm County, and has approached our landowner group to discuss the potential for signing easements. We have convened a leadership steering committee representing approximately fifteen thousand acres of land in Mount Palm Wind Project footprint.